Every day is a day of Thanksgiving, not just the Fourth Thursday in November. Every day is a day of Thanksgiving because you are so bountiful and so generous, so kind and so good to us. Father God, I do pray for the remission of our sins, and Father God, I do pray that for the sick, the distressed, their oppressed. I pray for all those who are in need, and Father God, there are so many varying levels of needs. But Father God, you're the great physician, you're the great healer, and you are the great counselor. You're our rock, our fortress, our salvation, and we come to you with our daily needs. Father God, I thank you for our first responders. The first responders are just a gambit of people that work to protect citizens. And our firemen, our EMS, our police, our deputy sheriffs and sheriffs, the highway patrol, military, home and abroad. We just pray for all those who protected us and give us the freedoms that we have today. And Father God, be with us. Lead God and direct us. Give us open hearts to what we're going to be discussing today, and let us make the best decisions for the citizens of this county. Father God, all these things I humbly pray in your name, the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our risen Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so before we get started, I want to ask if there are any.
Time out. Track them over here.
Can you turn the mic on? Okay. Before we get going line by line, dollar by dollar, I want to know if there are any questions I can answer, or any questions that you can have that might help speed this process.
I got some.
You can thank Kathy for that.
Okay.
We appreciate that. Try to remember that.
I have seven questions.
Well, please, what are they?
Question message, on number four, it says, "Human resource adjustment, the budget and administration portion of the proposed budget. This individual will add great value in her leadership role to our organization. This addition is the only new employee budget in the proposal." Is that the only new employee?
Yes.
I want you to go to. Section one-one-five-two-one.
Yep.
It says, "The agency is requesting to reclassify the administrative supervisor position. This current position for administrative supervisor wanted completing tasks that were made the position administrator to supervisor. The administrative supervisor is..." I'm going to skip, but anyway, at the very bottom, they are asking for an adult protective service worker. Why is it still in there if it's not?
It's not in there. It's not in.
It's right here on the sheet.
Right, I'm telling you. New new position. That's right.
But why you leave it in there?
Um, the explanation, I went with the explanations that were given, and I can explain to you right now that it's not in there.
The budget contains an increase for all employees. All employees will receive result of recently updated salary set at ninety-seven percent of the market, or five percent COLA which they'll retire. On that same thing, that department budgeted for additional three percent, or was that three percent taken out and replaced by five percent?
I take everybody's salary and benefits out, and I calculate that myself. I have my own method.
So you just didn't clean up the explanation?
The explanations are given by the department head, and I want them to explain to you what they're doing. Salaries and benefits belong to me.
But these be cleaned up to the point of causing confusion?
I'll work harder to meet your expectations. What else? Okay. So. We can, there was a big change that was made, and let's just get that, let's just get started on it. And it was, we had a salary study done. Okay? Salary study was done to update salaries for our employees, okay? Beyond salaries, the budget, departments were within reason, given what requested. Few slight changes here and there, but for the most part, I don't know of any, anyone who didn't agree to any changes that were made. The big thing is the salaries, so. Becky Veezy came and spoke to the department heads in a meeting that was called in February or March, and everyone had to turn in their information that Becky Veezy asked for, and we also recorded it, put it online for all other employees to see. The staff was instructed that if anything in their job description changed, to do a job description update form, or something closely named to that, to let Becky Veezy know that responsibilities had changed. This was all done by most departments, timely, which allowed Becky Veezy to put together a revision to our salary study. So I think it's important to note that. This is not like what we had done before, um, three years ago. This is just a revision, so you need what we did three or four years ago, and this is a complement to it. So when she provided me the first option, uh, the information for the first option, and I climbed back into my chair after falling out, um, I realized that, uh, we still weren't as close to the market as I thought we had become. She explained there were a few factors or variables that kept us, even though we were giving COLAs and increases, uh, during COVID and the pandemic, that really hurt us as we were given these raises, and they were. One was COVID, and the supply chain issues it's caused, um, the workforce issues that just the pandemic caused, but. Another effect of the COVID that was huge was called the Great Resignation. What we found was that people who had time and could left the workforce. And then we also found that younger people, specifically thirty-two and younger, left the workforce. So our entire workforce, um, a lot of it was covered by millennials, Generation Y, and Generation X. Okay? So. When there's a limited supply, the demand rises. So anyways, cost went up a little more than I had thought, um, a little more than I had hoped. So anyways, I worked with Ms. Veezy on some other options, because I think it's important that if we can't maybe meet the market, that we take steps to meet the market. And in reality, we ended up looking at. You know, five or six different options that all had tiered responses. In reality, there was eleven differences that I looked at, and you know, I do think I want to show this on the screen. I think, I think seeing it will help as I explain it. So. I didn't want to share the output. Of the. Of these, uh, different options until we examined the input variables. I think the input variables are important so that we have an understanding. Can you not read that, Susan?
Yes, sir, I cannot.
I can blow it up a little bit more.
I can turn it around to see.
Okay. So when I got my option one, option one adds a total year of service, okay? Uh, one percent for total years of service. What that means, let me explain what that means, is Jerry is a ten-year employee. He's been here for ten years, okay? So he's going to receive ten percent, one percent per year, okay? Uh, Becky explained to me that it was a very conservative method, because it took into account longevity, but not so much performance. Based on our current staffing level, that's an increase of fifteen point four percent, or one point one-six-five million. Now, where that puts us, you know, you might think, well, that's not so bad. What that does is that puts us at current market today. We still have to cross a fiscal year where it's prompt and it's prudent for an employer to give increases to the employees. So there's no COLA, there's no, you know, there's no talk of an increase. That just puts us at market today. And I don't know, I, I believe five percent should be our minimum, based on our eight and a half percent inflation. So I said, Becky, that's, that's not going to work once we really evaluated that option. I said, let's try something else. She said, okay. So let's, option two is, let's give a percent for blended years of service. Okay, what that means is half for the, the time there and half for the time in the position. So let's go back to our example. Jerry is our ten-year employee. Let's say that he was in a position for eight years and is now a supervisor the last two years. So half of the time in the position, so, um, I believe he'll get, uh, five percent for being employee, full-time employee, and then for the two years that he'll, he's been there, he'll get half of two, which is one. So in total, that is six percent. Does that make sense? So with that input, based on our current staffing, that's an increase of thirteen point four percent, or just under a million bucks. It, it really didn't help. Um, make it cost-effective, and we still didn't have an increase for the turn of the fiscal, which I think is very important. Okay? So I said, let's try another option. She said, okay. So we're chipping away at the input variables to make our output variable manageable. So we take that down to a half percent for the blended years of service. And what I just previously explained about that eight and two with Jerry is what we refer to as blended. So based on current staffing, that's an increase of eleven point two percent, or eight hundred and ten thousand. So we're working our way down, and you generally don't want to decrease the input variables beyond that. So then I kind of realized, well, maybe we need to get away from the being at the market. Maybe we need to back off. If you recall, in the first salary study conducted, we voted in to go at ninety-four percent of the market. So I thought, well, if we can't get to the market, what if we split the difference, like a ladder system or a tiered system? So I asked for ninety-seven percent. That's your option four. So in option four, she sent options one, two, and three at ninety-seven percent of the market, and you can see the corresponding increases in dollars and percentages. And then option four was a COLA, a minimum of one and a half percent across the board. What you'll find is that a, well, I'll explain that in a little bit. So at ninety-seven percent of the market. We, we, we can get down to five sixty. Now. To me, that's manageable, because of before, my initial, if you look in your request, in the, in the munis budget, not the explanation budget, I had input five percent across the board, okay? So at five, and that was very close to the five sixty. So I said, okay, well, let's go back and look for some more options if we have the availability, you know, if there's a little bit of a resource available. So I had option five A and option five B created. One was at ninety-six percent of the market, and one was at ninety-seven percent of the market. It maintains the blended, half percent for blended years of service that we talked about with Jerry as our example, and it gives the, the different outputs at the four percent or five percent for the options one or two. Now. Option five, okay, option five B, option two, five B hyphen two, is what I put into the recommended budget. Okay? That means. Everybody in the county will get, every, every county employee will receive at least five percent to combat the inflation that we're facing. Okay? It's still, if people take five percent, in reality, they are still, their, their money's not going as far as the inflation we're facing. It's not going as far as it had, okay? But there were a lot of departments that were under ninety-seven percent of the market, and it brings everyone else up, okay? To that ninety-seven percent. So at minimum, each employee will be at ninety-seven percent. I think that's a, and, and they're actually going to be getting many, I'll give you the numbers here if you let me think it through. They'll be gaining more than five percent in one, in one fell swoop, okay? So if I'm not mistaken, there were thirty-seven people. Of our entire staff that would receive only five percent, okay? I believe we have roughly two hundred and fifteen full-time, and I believe we have thirty-two or thirty-three vacancies. So we're down to about a hundred and eighty-two, a hundred and eighty-three, let's call it a hundred and eighty-two. Take out the thirty-seven, and you, a hundred and forty-five current employees will receive higher than five percent as we cross our fiscal year. But the people who are at market, for whatever reason, will still receive something to combat the inflation. So to me, this is not the most expensive option, and this is not the cheapest option, but I think it's a wonderful compromise that I have been able to make work in the budget, because the department heads were very. Um, they managed, I mean, they're, they're really great. They manage themselves a lot of times, and we just try to collaborate and stay on the same page, going in the same direction. But because of their, their budgeting skills and their departments, because of their, uh, their frugal mentalities, their efficient mentalities, I was able to make seven, uh, it's actually not seven-ten, but it's very close. Option five B, option two work in our budget. So that is not, you know, that's staying out of the nitty-gritty of, you know, who and what, because I don't think that that's entirely appropriate. It is public knowledge, but it's, it's my business to know, it's not, it's my job to know, it's not my business, if you will. But, uh. I, I really think that, uh, everyone would benefit very greatly from this option, and that's why I stuck it in there. Are there questions? That's a lot of information at once, and this is very, very complicated.
Based on looking at the last pay study.
Yes.
As far as classifications go, we reclassified several different individuals.
Yes, that was part of the assignment given Becky Veezy, um, and the department heads. When she came and spoke to them, they were supposed to say if it was the same job description, different duties, stuff like that. An additional duties, um, probably is going to put you in a different job classification. And then also, if something's changed in the external market that warrants a change in a job classification, this is the time to do that during a study. So this could be a result of something internal or external.
You also give us lists by departments if they will be receiving a raise in the amount? Can you give that to us as well?
I can. I can. Do you, who or the position?
It says position on this last one you gave us of options.
Yeah, that, I can, I'll.
I mean, that gives me more of a visual.
Absolutely. Now, I actually.
These numbers are, are great if you can figure out what you're talking about.
Yep. So I have a little picture here I drew as I was practicing going over this with you guys, and it's kind of small, but I'll be glad to show it to you.
No, I'm just saying.
So.
It's more defining, because as Mr. Burr's passed, it determines who gets what.
That's right.
In the department. You're saying that every employee is guaranteed at least five?
Yes.
And so to get as much as nine point nine?
No. No, um, the, the nine point nine percent is an increased percentage in current payroll. Payroll's going to go up nearly ten percent.
But the individuals themselves?
An individual themselves will receive at least ninety-seven percent of the market. Or, or they're, if they're above the market, they'll have gotten five percent to combat inflation. So I, I didn't, I didn't do a percentage on people. Um, I didn't, I just did a dollar value on the people.
But I think it's valuable information for our staff to know who's getting what, and that is, you say it's public information.
It is.
And that is how you calculated salary and benefits? Because this only covers salary, it does not cover benefits?
No, it doesn't. Benefits are in addition to.
So this will be higher?
Yes.
For the benefits?
Absolutely. Yes, your FUD or FICA, however you want to think about it, is going to go up, um, the dollar amount of point oh seven-six-five. Your, our pension this year is up to point one-two-one. But those are the only additions. The others are set numbers.
And again, you gave us that previously of how much more the benefits would cost as well.
Okay, um.
I'm just looking back at what you gave in twenty-twenty.
Sure. Sure, if you give me that, I'll, I'll mimic it.
Because I think definitely our employees need a raise. We can't give them what they deserve, and how much work they put into the county. But again, changing positions, since I asked for this money, I can't look here and tell you what, who went where, what grade.
I'll tell you.
And all that kind of stuff, so I.
I was trying to.
Can't do a comparison as far as looking at salary and benefits.
I was trying to explain that before, the most adversely affected positions were increased to ninety-four percent of the market. And if you'll remember, there were certain departments that, that received raises and that were affected. So as we go from ninety-four to ninety-seven, what you're going to see is those same departments that were affected before and are at ninety-four percent to go to ninety-seven will also be affected. But it's also going to pick up many other departments, every other department, and put them at the ninety-seven percent level, okay?
Like I said, I would just like that information, hopefully by next Tuesday, and we'll meet again.
Sure, yeah.
If you can email us prior to.
Yeah, if you'll show me that crystal report, I'll have that created for your viewing pleasure.
And this was at ninety-seven percent of the day?
Yes, like I said, I think that was a great step. Um, ninety-four, you know, you guys allowing the ninety-four to go in, and now ninety-seven, the next step. And in the future, maybe we can get to one, or at least hover, you know, get right close to it. This is all in an attempt to help us recruit. We have, as I mentioned before, I believe it's thirty-three job openings, and, uh, every jurisdiction is facing challenges like this. So I think, uh, paying closest to market will help us recruit, but it's also going to help us retain. So some of our employees won't jump ship for somebody who's at ninety-nine percent of the market, when at ninety-seven percent of the market, um, their needs can be met. I just think it's, that's a great compromise.
And I also think they understand what happened back when everything was bust. That we don't want to get to a point that our budget can't handle this. And being able to specifically say how much we're looking at. Now, you've got a broad number here, but that is not include benefits.
So for benefits, I can show you the calculation for a benefit. If you just add thirty percent, you're probably close.
I'd rather not add it, but. So thirty percent is benefits, that includes insurance.
Yep.
All their insurance is applied.
Now, yep, you need to remember.
That's not an increase though. I mean, that's there, that's a fixed number for everybody.
Yes, I agree. That's already in the budget.
I think he's saying thirty percent of seven hundred and ten thousand, seven eighty-eight, right?
Um, seven-ten, seven-eighty-eight is for current.
Increase.
Increase for salaries.
Right, right, it's for current employment increase for salaries.
Right.
That does not take into consideration vacant positions. The budget does. That is just current employees, okay?
The benefits is thirty percent of that number of current employees.
Yes, that's right, but also, I'll tell you that in the budget, I had a hundred percent of classified positions in the budget, even the vacant ones.
So this number is not correct, meaning this is current employees.
Low.
So it's going to be higher if we give more employees?
Yes, when we are able to fill positions, that will go up, and it's all budgeted. Any questions on that? What are you thinking?
I'm thinking that, um, I'm curious about that thirty percent that you just said.
Now, that is a broad number, and just remember, the higher employee, um, let's see. The more employee makes, the higher employee is paid, the lesser of that, uh, percentage. Would be charged. The lower an employee is paid, the higher the value of that benefits percentage. I would estimate thirty percent is a good number.
That does include insurance.
Yeah. Thirty percent includes insur, thirty percent.
That's why I'm asking, insurance is, is a, is a, is a fixed number that's going to be for everybody, period.
Yes.
If they take it.
If they take it.
If employees are not taking it.
But, yeah.
It doesn't matter whether, whether we have an employee that's making twenty thousand dollars a year or an employee's making a hundred thousand dollars a year, the insurance is going to be the same.
You got it. Yes, sir.
So that's, that's, that thirty percent is kind of skewed, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, that's right, and that's.
It's not going to be thirty percent additional benefits expenses, so that insurance is already there.
Yeah, I think the insurance, okay, insurance is, yes, but benefits package is a total. I think thirty percent is a, a fair number.
What did you say, five of total was what?
Point oh seven-six-five.
One more time.
Point oh seven-six-five.
Medicare?
Well, that's combined. Well, Medicare and, uh, one of them's, uh, point oh-six-two, one of them's point oh-one-four-five. Total, point oh-seven-six-five.
And how much is needed insurance this year?
Seventy-four hundred dollars per employee per year.
And that's all budgeted?
Yeah.
And what is it, FICA? You said Medicare is FICA?
Um, so there's two parts to, to what I call is FUD or FICA.
Social Security?
Social Security. Yep, one of them's point oh-six-two, one of them's point oh-one-four-five. I'd have to cheat and look to tell you which one's which, but the combination we call.
The more they make, the more they should pay.
Yes.
And as Chairman Hughes said, the insurance will stay the same.
Insurance is a constant, that's, that's right.
And then the benefits?
Oh, yeah, pension, it's point one-two-one.
One-two-one?
That's right.
And that's in at thirty percent?
Yes. Yep, life insurance, it's constant thirty-six dollars per year.
But that doesn't change regardless of salary?
No, no.
I mean, has nothing to do with salary?
No. Everyone, everyone gets that. Well, the sheriff's officers are part of the. The sheriff's four-all-one-k contribution, which is five percent for every dollar, so that's going to change based on money. But I was able to, because of their careful budgeting and their, their compromises with me, I was able to balance the budget out with just one new employee who I overheard, you know, I heard you guys loud and clear, let's get that individual here, so we're already advertising for it. But with their, their compromise with me, I was able to compromise the budget and put together a, a great balanced budget, inclusive of option five B two.
Can you email that to us, please?
Yeah, I, I do want to see that report though, but I, I got to know a crystal report from report Susan has.
Yeah, it was sent out in May of twenty nineteen.
Okay. Great. So do you want to go through dollar by dollar, line by line, or can I just broadly say? Everybody was in agreement.
I would just like to make a comment.
Yes, sir.
And that is simply stated that it's common sense that we're in a balancing act. And that is simply stated that it's common sense that we're in a balancing act.
Yes.
And we do, we do, we want to, and we are going to compensate our employees. We started out, you know, prior to the first study, we were significantly below, uh, the market pay. Went to ninety-four percent a couple of years ago. Now we're going to get, now we're talking about going to ninety-seven percent, which I fully support. Um, I support this option five B, uh, option five B, option two. I support that. Uh, recognizing that I do believe that it's manageable within our revenue stream. And it's not going to put us in jeopardy of having to have a tax increase for our taxpayers or anything like that. I think it's a good, a good compromise all the way around, and I do appreciate all the time that we need to coming up with this option. I sincerely appreciate what you've done there, but I do, I definitely think it's appropriate.
Thank you. Okay, well, let's, let's go ahead and jump in.
So you're going off the explanations, or you're going off the expenditures?
Expenditure, I'll do it with the explanations, or we can do it without. I have a great idea of what's in them.
Questions on both?
Okay. Would, do you want to address questions before we?
Do you want to go with, I mean, I would buy departments, so I'm talking about.
Yeah, yeah, we can do by department because that's probably easiest. Um, if we go to four eleven, does anything, any questions, anything stick out in your minds there?
Now, some commissioners are getting the five percent raise, or are they going to get the?
Of course they would.
Just five percent?
Yes.
And do they also get a hundred dollars for travel?
Yes.
Okay, well, if you look at the actual, the travel. Twenty-one and twenty-two.
Yeah.
I got it costing six thousand dollars.
Okay. Commissioners are allowed to ask for reimbursement for their travel to other locations. And I pull it out of that line item initially, and if that line item goes over, then I pull out of my administrative budget. But I think it's important that commissioners, um, it is a job to be a commissioner. It's, trust me, it's not these.
I'm not questioning that. I'm not questioning the amounts.
Okay.
Do they get a hundred dollars a month in their paycheck for travel?
Yes.
So that should be six thousand dollars if my math is correct.
The chairman gets a hundred and fifty.
Oh, chairman gets a hundred and fifty for travel?
Yes.
And how much over does he get in the salary? A hundred dollars a month?
I can't remember. I, I don't know. It's, uh.
Used to be.
Is it a hundred dollars? Hundred dollars.
I'm looking at some of these expenses, two thousand twenty-three action. I realize there's still a couple, a bit more time left in the year.
What are you looking at again?
I do not understand some of these two thousand twenty-two actual expenses. When I look at the, the actual, I'll use, I'm saying three thousand dollars, but if you look at the board expense for two thousand twenty-two, we only spent four dollars. I don't understand that.
Yep. So there's a great explanation for that. So when, when we build these uh, explanation sheets, these are billed when we give them to the department heads in February, okay? And then when they give it back to me, they give back their request. So in February, those twenty-twenty-two actuals are what they are. So they've also had, you know, three, four months for more to be expensed. And it's also given finance three or four months to catch up on any expenses that need to be moved and input into these, uh, these line items. Okay?
It's about February, we only have four dollars in expenses.
Yeah, that's exactly what that says.
How can you buy for four dollars and twenty-two cents?
Now, this isn't, this is a budget, this is a budget meeting, not an actuals meeting.
Well, I mean, you're basing our information on actuals.
I know. Uh, so what I look at is I look at annual actuals, and then I take, you know, four dollars, I would just say is zero, okay? But, uh, if we budgeted three thousand dollars in that line item for the past ten years, and we have not gone over, I'm going to put it back in there again um, to encourage the travel of commissioners to conferences and such, so that you can become educated, so that you can be informed, you can know current events, so that you can maybe have a comrade from another county, that you can bounce ideas off of to improve yourselves, educate yourselves, and make yourselves better. No different than an employee.
So I don't think we give ourselves a raise also, is that correct?
Yes, you're an employee.
We deserve a raise.
What's that?
Why do you think commissioners deserve a raise?
Well, I don't think that being a commissioner is probably the easiest job. I think you probably take a lot of battering uh, verbally from the outside, the external world, and from the internal, you know, I'm sure you hear things. So it's not easy to be a commissioner. So I think to have your pay increased as an employee with everyone else's is, uh, it makes sense. Now, you can always give it up if you choose. That's, that's your choice, though. It's between you and God.
I'm, I'm going to be off topic right here, being a little bit humorous.
Remember, this is budget, not humorous.
You think I, you think I'll, you think we get more trouble and abuse in internal or external?
I, I don't know. That's between you and.
Let me ask you a question. I'm just going to be on topic. I'm going to get back on topic.
Can I just say, if you want my answers, you have to let me answer.
Here's my thing. If we waste between thirty thousand dollars in state fund, do you think we should deserve a raise?
Say it again now?
If we have wasted over the past year at least thirty thousand dollars in state fund, do you think we still deserve a raise?
Well, I don't think that's a fair question because there's a lot of variables that I don't know. So to make any sort of judgment on that would be, would be silly. That sounds like a setup question, so I'm going to pass.
If out of one hundred counties, grand county is the seventy-fifth highest, has the seventy-fifth highest property tax rate, and I have my foot right here.
That's the one.
And we have done nothing to improve that, you still think we deserve a raise?
I think the better question is, do you think you've done anything to improve that?
What have we done to improve our property tax rate?
To improve your property tax rate, I would say that the idea of a property tax is so that the county can receive revenue to provide services, which are then budgeted, and that's what we're here for, budget.
Should I go be trying to lower it somehow?
To lower taxes. Um, we could try to, if that's the initiative of a majority of the board, you sure could.
I know all the other commissioners are getting mad at me. I can read their faces, but I don't care.
Right.
You know, I feel like we have made a lot of mistakes this past year. One of the biggest mistakes is we've got who we work for, and that's the people. Our citizens are struggling. They're facing a crazy cost, high property value from the revaluation. Our employers are doing the jobs of multiple employers. Our social services director is having to do the job with three people. Our Medicaid supervisor, our child welfare supervisor, and our food distribution supervisor is having to do the job with two other supervisors. Yet, when they come to us pleading for help, we refuse them. And I asked about this earlier. If we cannot afford one extra position for social services, when they are already overworked and having to do the, the job to several other people, if we shortly do not deserve to give our service a raise, perhaps we should be saving money instead. I move to remove the county commissioners' raise from the budget.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
This is not amazing.
Yep.
It's just a workshop.
Move on.
Move on, Kevin.
Thank you. So are there any other questions in the governing body? Okay. So let's move to general government. Take a look.
What number?
Eleven four twelve.
Gotcha.
Eleven four twelve. I tried to number on page two. It's really small. Sorry about that.
I'll see.
Um, you'll, basically, the, this is really where our insurance has come from. Every year, it's balancing act to put, uh, insurance into different departments, different funds to cover the expenses of our insurance. It is costly. Uh, we do that through the association county commissioners pooled insurances. I think they do a phenomenal job.
On fifty-four fifteen zero zero.
Yes.
Says a revised budget of three hundred and five thousand dollars. What is that for?
Okay, I've got to find that.
It's on the. Next to the last one, I'm not seeing one.
Eleven four one two, five four one five hundred?
Yes.
Nonprofit funding request?
No, five four one three hundred. Is that what that three hundred thousand is for?
I don't see a three hundred thousand, Susan.
On the menu sheet?
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm looking at.
On page four?
Not on page four.
On page two, right. On the menu sheet, on page four.
Okay. Hold on a second. Okay, the three hundred and five thousand in the revised budget, three hundred thousand was where I spent the one hundred thousand dollars per nonprofit in current fiscal year to make the SCIF funds and the ARC funds work out the way that the off-state budget management needed it to work, so that we could.
The question I had, where was the three hundred thousand?
Yes, that is, that is what that was. Is there anything else? I do want to make note that there is a, there is funding for a, the Manufacturers Association, a nonprofit set up by our economic developer to perform and promote the county.
What is that five thousand dollars going for?
Um.
Or it's been along?
Right, I just was saying, that's going to go to the Manufacturers Association to promote the county and for other fundraising, uh, fundraising, uh, things. I don't know.
So on the main, on page two of your explanation.
Yep.
I'm assuming this was done before the three hundred thousand was added?
Yes, that, that is very recent. If you recall, at our commissioner meeting on May.
But I'm just saying, they don't share the same numbers.
No, no, no. Okay, so if you recall, this was done in February.
And that's what I was just trying to say.
Yes.
This was done prior to three hundred thousand.
Yes.
They give them to the nonprofit.
That's correct.
That's why your numbers are different.
Yes, that's right. That's right. That's why the, the, not the recommended, the recommended's are the same. Any other questions in general government? Okay, we'll move on to administration. Now, I want to draw your attention in administration. If you look in the top right explanation, okay, is everybody there? You see ninety-four percent. I budgeted salaries and benefits for this department at ninety-four percent. Now, you're probably like, why would you do that, Kyle? Well, that is a, that is a, uh, that's a department where we have some vacancies that we will not fill, or I can assume we're going to fill, July first. And because of that, uh, these positions are valuable positions. And if we don't fill those positions, the salaries and benefits will not be used. Rather than have monies left over, lapped salaries, I budget them at a percentage that I think is most appropriate. Ninety-four percent is where I budgeted salaries and benefits for administration. Okay?
But those two positions could be, how much? Are you looking at two positions?
Three.
Finance officer.
There's a finance officer position, uh, position. There's a HR position, and there's a, another CPA position.
And so there's three possible.
That's right.
Adding.
Yeah. At one time.
Change that number drastically.
Yeah.
Where there are dollar positions.
That's right.
I was going to say how salary, excuse me.
They're high, yeah, they're, they're.
They're in demand.
They really are. Beyond that, um, I don't think you'll see anything that's drastically different from prior year. And the department head agreed with me on this budget.
Ain't that you?
It is.
Is that all? Postage machine, is it state per cost, are they going up on the floor?
Uh, postage does go up when your postage at home goes up. Okay, postage, man.
And I know I've asked this before, but for postage and phone, being in the same line item, you cannot determine what is what.
I, I can agree.
That's with every department. And I'm sure they've given a, an amount that they have to include in their budgets for postage and phone. It's that some department's got the new VoIP, Voide?
VoIP, voiceover IP.
System they're having to pay within their departments for that.
Yes, that's right.
It's twenty dollars per phone, per move.
That's right. That's right. And I think the department heads were all made aware of that. Those who have them or will have them by June thirtieth. They were all made aware of that cost, that expense, and so that is budgeted.
Per department?
Yes, yes. And I'll, I'll be honest, a reason we have not pulled that out or separated those two is because it is quite laborious. If I was setting up this chart of accounts, I wouldn't do it that way myself. But to pull it apart is going to take a lot of man-hours by an individual that we just currently don't have in our finance department.
If you start July one, doing it that way, it's not a man-hours change. You're entering data for July one.
Yes, you can't budget for something like that accurately if you don't have it changed or a trend to build your budget off of. Everything is circular in a budget, cert- you know, budget to audit. Okay, so any, any, um, any other questions in administration? Okay, we'll move on to tax. The budget presented from tax appeared to me to be in line with previous years and with their initiatives. And I think it's explained very well in the explanations. Uh, do you think Miss Stephanie is here in case there's something about, uh, beyond my level of know, if you, if you have any questions?
She's also asked for a new position. Does she not get that?
So we made a deal that.
We're dealing in dealing now, that's.
Yeah, it's called management.
Management's a dealer.
Yes, you, you make compromises. So we compromised that rather than fill her assistant position, we would fill a new tax lister two position, and that's what you'll see budgeted. That position, the assistant tax director, is not budgeted.
So the grade one, the grade two change?
That was done in the salary study, which I took note of. That's right. And it was done.
So that's in there?
That's it. Yes, ma'am.
I'll check.
Good.
So she did get a position?
She traded a position.
All right, then we might need to do some trading somewhere else. Part-time salary, you got two people.
That's right.
And he's got sixty thousand dollars.
That's right. When we increase salaries at five percent for the full-time, I fully expect to increase the salaries for part-time at five percent.
At fifteen hundred dollars.
Yep.
Do we got somebody making big bucks from part-time salary?
I think that there is individuals with a lot of experience that give the county a lot of benefit that are paid comparably.
Ordinary is comparable.
Yes, comparably with the, I don't know, the output that they give.
I just thought fifteen hundred dollars and we're paying sixty thousand dollars for two part-time positions. It was just a question I had.
Thank you.
I got a question. How come we're not being live streamed? How come our meeting's not being live streamed?
We, we, so we have to pay for live streaming and recording. We get up to five hours a month for a certain load fee. We, we, so we have to pay for live streaming and recording, we get up to five hours a month for a certain load fee. Since these meetings typically go two, three hours per piece of recording, and then we'll post them after the meeting. We ain't got to bump up and get a higher pay, because it's fifty dollars extra a month if we go under that threshold.
You're recording it, we'll post it online?
Just trying to be efficient with the county's money. Thank you, Trey.
With the taxpayer's money.
Yes, sir.
For the taxpayer's money.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions in tax?
Kyle, you think that you'd be able to fill some of those, uh, positions? Your position in a few months?
I'm hoping that an increase in salaries will entice those we're recruiting for to fill the positions. A lot of the positions that are vacant have value, and it just means that some work is not being done. So, yeah, I really hope that those positions can be filled. I think that an increase in the pay will entice people to come.
So, which department are you running the most in?
I would say our largest vacant department would either be the sheriff or DSS. Sheriff, I believe, has nine sheriffs, nine deputies down, and DSS is probably nine or ten, two.
Yeah, we're about maybe about six or seven.
Okay, it's not as bad, six or seven, they are too large.
Well, then the finance department also is...
Well, yeah.
Even though it's only...
It's three.
Three positions, but it's still...
They, they're positions of great value, yes, I agree. Every position's valuable, yeah.
If you look at numbers, that says one thing, if you look at percentages, it says something else.
Yes, you're right, it is a high percentage in the finance department.
Right.
Yes, sir. And, and you know, I just don't see that getting better. I hope it does, but I noticed even today, Onslow County's finance director position is now open, Cabarrus County's position is now open. It's, that is a department, that is a, um, that's an area of expertise that everyone is having trouble filling. I was talking to Ms. Edmondson at the LGC, and she even mentioned that, you know, they have positions they could fill, so we, uh...
As I mentioned a year, if we can get a applicant that meets the qualifications but doesn't have the munis background, that possibly we could hire Ms. Thornton, Ms. Stroud to come back in and do a lessons on munis. We need to do something, we don't just need to be sitting there with two and a half people during all five minutes.
Yep.
That's unreasonable to ask them to do that.
I agree, but I also, I also have to be honest with myself that I, I want to bring someone on staff that I don't think is qualified or is going to fit in our team.
But again, you've got three positions to fill there, you're surely getting an application for someone. I'm just saying, I want us hurting in the end when it comes down to the audit and, and these people get burnt out and leave.
Yep.
That's my main concern about the finance department.
Any questions in tax? Okay, we'll move on. Okay, so we're in courts. Courts is a, it's really a reimbursement budget for expenses of the court system on the facility.
Now, five, twenty, one hundred, we've spent postage, telephone in the last two years, but there's no amount there for it. Requested or recommended?
Yep.
Reason? Spending the money, there's not a budget, why not need to add that information there?
I'll look at it and make sure that it's being coded correctly.
Well, I'm just playing, there's nothing there and...
I know.
But we spent money.
Well, no, because in the court system...
According to this sheet, we have spent money in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two.
And that's why I said I'll check and see if it's coded correctly, because the AOC pays for their phones. So we can move on to...
Elections.
Elections.
Elections. Pretty standard budget, thought Trey turned it in, did a very nice job. Questions?
Is the warehouse completed?
The warehouse is complete, we still, one or two projects in the equipment line that we are trying to finish up. That's more cement, more shelving, more additional security measures that are lacking.
We saw that at the bottom, have we stopped paying rent to the town of Snow Hill?
Yes, ma'am.
Why is there two overtime columns, sir?
For some reason, in the chart of accounts, there's a, there's the object code five, one, zero, one, oh, one and five, one, zero, one, fifty. It's a conundrum to me, too, it's a chart of account thing. So wherever the payroll is being expensed to is the one that we want to keep in there, but it's going to show up either way for three years until a, a line item is not used.
We used to expense out of a different account every time, and then we barely got here, we changed to a code that everybody uses. So that's why it shows up twice.
So that's a cleanup of the chart of accounts.
So that twenty-eight, eight forty should really be down to the second one, one fifty. On actuals, or excuse me, budgeted amounts. So we got actuals for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
And it's less than ten, and we put fifteen because of the two elections? Is that correct? Are we going to have a runoff?
Ninety-seven percent confident we're not going to have a runoff, but the deadline is next week. At that point, we can, we'll go for sure.
That, that money will be left if we do not have runoff. Thank you, sir.
Register dates.
Okay, we'll move on to Nancy's budget. The only thing that I've changed in this budget was salary and benefits, otherwise it's as requested, just like the others. Thank you. So, um, let's see, four twenty, we are getting into building inspections. I don't believe I took anything out, the increase you'll see from the request to the recommend is salaries and benefits.
You just said option five B, option two.
That's the one.
Question on five, one, seven, three hundred?
Yep.
Just got gas at three dollars and seventy-five cents.
Saw that.
I don't know where they're going to find gas at three seventy-five next year.
Sixty days ago, when they put that in.
That's right, so that's something that we all need to be very aware of, gases fluctuating up and down, it's high right now. I know I cut ga, I cut fuel out of a couple of different budgets when gas was going down, I was like, woo, it's starting, then it went back up, so...
So that's possibly going to be a change or amount?
Well, if they, if they use up what, what they have been budgeted, then we need to either pull it from another source in the budget, or...
Is that the only thing in auto supply is gas?
I believe, I believe so.
Is that correct, sir?
Yes, we have all the supplies and then mics, auto mics.
That's right.
I'll think it's twelve or sixteen.
Right.
Sixteen.
Auto supplies is for gas only.
Yeah.
Might need to look at that. Well, some rules and regulations for gas consumption.
Well, department heads have been told that if they need to travel, to travel, we have jobs to do. If there's some unnecessary travel, to be mindful and be efficient with the fuel that the taxpayer is providing the employee to consume. And I believe in their, that they're responsible.
I'm going to give you the marker, sir.
I bet why would I?
Animal control.
Okay.
It's a cost of phones in there? Let me phone you, is building inspections also that whole wing down there?
Yes.
So that includes planet?
That's right.
Everybody, so they got...
One stop shop.
Five phones.
So they got five phones.
So animal control takes into account the salary study, that's the salaries and benefits. And for the most part, it, it years prior year minus, minus a vehicle.
And looking at utilities, five, twenty, two hundred?
Yep.
Based on twenty-one and twenty-two, the utilities has never been eighty-five hundred bucks. So is that just to add?
Um, let me think about that one quick, if I'm not mistaken, there was something added into that that previously wasn't there.
Do they have utilities for water or sewer or just lights?
They do have water, they don't have sewer.
But the county doesn't give them available water, do they?
We may be coding it out to them, I think that's actually what we started doing, was coding the utilities out to the individual department rather than including them in... That's right, four sixty-one.
But I'm just saying that you've got eighty-five hundred dollars in there, highest they've spent is thirty-eight.
So what I'm seeing that we were coding total from, you know, munis, the trend is, is that's where I expect it to be current year, so I'm going to put it there for next year, I want to make sure we budget and we, uh, we cover our budgets.
And I'm assuming they don't have any equipment to repair?
Um, they usually have air conditioners and heaters, washers, dryers.
Is that big buildings?
Say it again?
That big building?
They'll, they have some maintenance repair on the building, that's correct.
And then the equipment is the washer and dryer, so they haven't done anything this year?
Um, they may not have, but I, I know that those things need to be replaced in that department frequently.
But we didn't put anything in the budget to replace them?
Um, do you see equipment less than five thousand?
Yeah.
Twenty-five hundred bucks.
And that's for the washer and dryer?
Um...
We don't know.
I would have to look, I didn't get the explanation on this one, I apologize, that's, that's me.
And that was a, one of the things, that's why this one didn't have the explanation. Wouldn't have to ask all these questions.
Kyle, on the contract services, what that?
Say it again, sir?
Contract services on...
I believe that's where we are paying Dr. Shaver. He is the, the Northside Animal Hospital, he performs some services for us. And he's been a very good partner, he's been a very good partner.
Sure.
Thank you, okay? If you'll notice in the explanation, I did write eighty-seven percent, I'll, I'll repeat, review again, that based on their, their, their total classified positions and their vacancies, I budgeted their salaries and benefits at eighty-seven percent. I believe that is going to be sufficient to cover those line items. Hopefully not forever, but for now, for now.
But again, next year, I guess the sheriff is wanting his other deputies, he's got to say nine. Again, to me, that's kind of mind-blowing that we're not budgeting for those positions in our budget for this coming year. And then that's going to add to those totals. Just like with any department, which you put percentages, just like your work. You're a department that you asked yourself about.
That's right.
I don't know what that's going to entail. Doing, leaving off thirteen percent of the salaries. That's just a question I have.
I don't quite understand the question.
We don't have the money to pay if he hires him.
Oh, yeah, yes.
There's thirteen, thirteen percent not being in this, this budget.
That's right.
So we would have to do a budget amendment to increase that amount. I'm assuming at the end of the year, if he still does not have nine deputies or...
Now, out of that nine that we keep talking about, there's actually getting...
Hey, come on up here, hey, come up here. I can't go talk that there, I'm not here, I'm just saying. Come on up here.
From the back.
Anyway, out of, out of the nine positions that we were talking about. All right, so rolling over, rolling over to this incoming month, we're getting ready to start an individual full-time. August, I'll have another one starting full-time, they're finishing up school. So that's going to bring us back down to seven. I've also got a brand-new person that's starting, so that's going to drop us back down again to six.
See, that's what I was referring to, if you're filling these positions...
On top of that, come August, we're going to be sending folks to Belet, is what my plan is. So some of these positions are going to wind up being filled.
Right, and that was what I was saying, that it's not budgeted.
Right.
And you may have somebody else to leave, or, you know, I know there's a lot of variables in the salaries.
What I can tell, we had budgeted on that, from what I'm looking at, with it, part of the salary that, just a big chunk of salary that's gone out of mine right now is the fact we lost dispatch. So that's, that's me.
They have their own little sheet, this salary is, I wasn't looking at last year's, I was just looking at, we're only on eighty-seven percent.
As far as the big drop for that is, that dispatch is not... Right.
Maybe by the end of next year.
Correct.
Automotive supplies, does that include your gas?
Hold on a minute.
Again, since you've mentioned gas before.
It does.
Yes, that's going to include on that.
Five seventeen, three hundred?
Yes.
Yes, that's gas and tires.
What did you include your price at?
What now?
What was your price for gas?
I, I budgeted for five dollars a gallon. That's what I want to hit in budget for. Because, well, I mean, the thing about it is, gas prices, fuel prices go up, when fuel and petroleum goes up, tires goes up.
That's right.
So, it's a petroleum product. Any other questions on mine?
If you don't have it.
While I'm here.
And I'm assuming in the capital outlay, five thirty-two hundred, is that your three additional cars?
That would be three cars I budgeted at, what the current price is, but I just got off the phone with it later this morning, if we can even get these cars. Dodge is planning on starting back up for law enforcement and public safety in September, is what they've been told. Now, that's what they've been told, that's coming to the dealer. So anyhow, the last price on that was about thirty-three thousand per car for a Charger, which is about a ten thousand dollar per car increase. Due to supplies and everything else going through the roof.
And I, I understand that, though, I was asking, but...
Yes, ma'am, there are several items that are on here, just like with the uniform budget. We're waiting on current stuff that is back ordered from Reed's. There's a lot of supply-demand issues, mainly shipping issues and what the manufacturers can even get. So, as you're looking at the current budgets that are coming out now, as far as the monthly stuff, it's showing up now that, hey, we're finally getting some of this stuff in. But it's been a waiting game for some time.
Do you also do the jail?
I do. Jail is going to see some changes on some of that, we did add in a potential resource of revenue as the court system starts back up, we're going to start receiving more inmates on state misdemeanor confinement, so that's going to bring that back up.
This is just expenditures.
All right, anyhow, I get that part, point is, is that we're still going to take and do on that.
And is your jail at capacity?
Do what now?
Is your jail at capacity?
No, we haven't been filled to capacity.
But we've, I guess we have...
That's not because I'm turning them away, that's because they're not there.
But that's because the salary is a hundred percent there for the positions?
No, it's at ninety-six percent, just like it says over there, by approved.
It says jail, nothing. The sheriff's department I see says ninety-six percent. And the ninety-six on the jail, on the...
Eighty-seven for the sheriff, ninety-six for the jail.
Yeah.
So we've got four.
That's right.
Four percent that we're not allocated for.
That's right.
Is that a, a development progress, too?
That's correct, we've got two, uh, two potential new hires, I believe, there's one other position left in the jail.
Okay, so that's...
That's the closest we've been to filling back up in a while.
And we may have to add some more to the jail salaries.
That potentially on that, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Any other questions on sheriff or jail?
How much you send you budget for gas, for gas, what I think? I think we might need to get our department heads together and, because we're way off, we're way off on this gas part.
We don't know where it's going. We don't know what it's going to do. I think we get five dollars more, we're gonna be able to get three seventy-five, if you can get it. The gas, it should be a variable that's gonna fluctuate, in my opinion.
A budget at best is the best swag effort to do what we know historically has been in the past, and the crystal ball for what we might have in the future.
That's right.
Move on.
Thank you, sir. Communications, four forty-one.
Well, how about emergency services?
Emergency management.
Emergency services, the emergency department.
Okay, so-
Emergency management's next.
So page twelve, page twelve, sorry, I got a little ahead of myself there. Right?
Yeah, page twelve.
Okay.
Emergency services.
Any questions?
What this says? I'm just going by what the sheet says. Well, I guess the title matter is, Brock's department.
But we're here.
Page twelve. Yes, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The, uh, I guess the increase on fifty-two oh one one hundred is for the Viper radios, or excuse me, the VoIP, VoIP radio phones. You've got four?
Correct.
And also fifty-five thirty-one three hundred. Brock, I don't know if you wanna come up here and discuss that it irritates the other commissioners that Mr. Burr, Commissioner Burr's can't hear you from in the back when he asks somebody to come up, so I'm just gonna ask you to come up anyway.
Sure.
Um, I know in the budget message that you included with the budget, that this eight thousand dollars goes back again to the fire department's assessment. We discussed this on March seventh with the meetings.
Correct.
Um, and the final conclusion was to send it back to the Fire Fighters Association, if they would like that to pay for it.
Right.
Now, we have that included in the budget, and from what my understanding, the president of the Fire Fighters Association has not requested this. I know it was a discussed at the last meeting-
Right.
That y'all had, and it was not unanimous that we do this assessment.
Correct.
Putting it in the budget, to me, is doing another mandate that we discussed on March seventh, and all the commissioners were in unison, said we don't mandate anything on the fire departments.
Right.
Um, they have the choice to do it or not. I went back and looked at the assessment that you gave us that night from the, uh, I don't remember his name. I got, I want you to do it.
Yes.
That the, um, scope is to look at emergency service response and service delivery divided, provided by each of the eleven departments and rescue departments serving the county. Fire departments, what are we actually trying to assess here? Because my understanding that these fire departments are assessed by the state every five years.
Sure. So this assessment is to look through and just look at staffing levels, um, the amount of money that they are receiving, whether it be their, their tax money, is what their tax rate is, however, looking at what the county's contribution is to them, um, looking at their, if they could benefit from increased equipment, or you know, anything like that, is just the overall, hey, how can the fire departments increase their level of service to the citizens of the county?
And each department has a fire chief and a board of directors.
That's correct.
Does those individuals not need to be the deterrent of the things that you just said this assessment would do?
I believe that the recommendations will be provided, and it will be up to the individual department to, you know, either act on what the recommendations were.
But again, I, I just was surprised that it was thrown in there, and in my opinion, it's a mandate.
Brock, wasn't there another meeting that took place where they voted, and it went ten to one, to support this initiative?
Yes. They, they had a vote at the last chiefs or fire, fire association meeting, that said that if the county would, the fire departments would agree to have the assessment done, if the county would pay for it. Um, I know the original meeting, it made it seem like I had said that you all had mandated that, and they really didn't have a choice. However, it was brought up again at the last meeting, and they all agreed, and they took a vote. They said if the county would agree to pay for it, they would be more than willing to have it done. It was out of the eleven departments, ten of them voted yes, one voted no.
But again, being in the budget, is that not a mandate?
That's just covering the financial, um, end of it.
But you're mandating that all eleven fire departments have this.
If we put the money in the budget, it means that we can cover the cost, as was talked about at their last meeting.
Right. The money just sits aside for it to be in.
I just don't think it needs to be put in the county budget. Um, again, it just looks funny that we said, um, for the fire association to pay for it, I talked to the fire chief myself, he did not request this eight thousand dollars. So when we put this in the budget, as commissioners, if we said we would not do, it's mandate the fire departments to do this.
Right. He wouldn't have put it in his budget, because at that time, it was before that meeting had taken place.
Correct.
So, upon- In your expenditure sheet, it is, correct? Your munis sheet, from May sixteenth?
Yep, based on what he has told me, that they are in ten to one agreement to have this done, it's included in the budget.
Brock asked this to be put in here.
Um, Brock directed me to put it in there, be, based on what their decision was.
I think a lot of the fire departments are still up, not knowing what to do, and this is no reflection on you.
Right.
Because I think they are looking at this assessment as having some implications for the small departments.
Right.
And have, and to me, if the state does an assessment every five years.
Right.
And this, I'm assuming is through the Department of Insurance?
It is.
That they do this every five years, and to be sure, that report determines staff, equipment.
It do, it meets the, it says that the departments meet the minimum requirements to be a, a, to provide fire protection, yes.
At a certain level.
Correct.
Nine through whatever.
Correct.
And we've had several departments that have passed and lowered the insurance for their citizens in their district.
That's correct.
And each department is striving to do that.
I, I-
So I think this is, to me, is, is a replication of what the state already does. I mean, I'm sure you can get access to those reports.
This, um, this organization, they take a deeper dive into the state, kind of does a broad level, um, you meet these checkboxes, and you know, yes, you are, you know, you can provide fire protection to your community. The, this organization takes a little bit deeper dive and provides strategic planning and different things like that to help you for the future growth in your, uh, jurisdiction.
Well, you talked to fire chiefs tonight, and I've talked to them myself. Their main concern at this point is volunteerism.
Right.
How to retain what they have, and how to recruit new volunteers into the system.
That's right.
And to me, that would be a better assessment of helping these fire departments, is looking at what they actually need as far as the assessment goes. And I'm sure you can get the number of calls each fire department responds to.
Right.
So I just don't think this assessment is warranted in the budget as a mandate within Fire Fighters Association appropriations.
Okay, thank you.
I don't consider it a mandate. If ten out of eleven has said we want to do this.
Majority.
That's pretty significant majority, and we're just covering the expense if we proceed further, forward with it.
What are you, what are we trying to do? We try to figure right here, get their ratings up to lower the homeowners insurance.
We are just trying to make sure that the citizens are provided the highest level of fire protection that can be provided. And that's the goal.
And you're, I'm assuming you said last time they were gonna do green count EMS?
They would be, yes.
And what they're gonna come up with is, we need a first EMS station in the east park camp, which has already been allocated. Using state funds. But again, you're redundant.
But there could be other things that we could improve on, and I'm not an expert.
I think eight thousand should be spent in another area.
I'm not an expert in EMS or emergency management, so-
Oh, I'm not either, but I'm-
Any recommendation that we can get on how to improve ourselves, I'll take it. I'll take it under consideration at least.
But again, it's already here within your departments. Why would you want an outside person coming in and telling the departments that information they already know?
There's always a chance that there could be information that they don't know.
I'm not speaking on this topic. I'm fixing to open up a can of worms, I'll probably get central before the end of the meeting, I don't care. I received a message, it said, it's from the county fire chief. It said, "Well, Brock's office is one to try to pull a fast one on the county commissioners again, most of the shine crowd." Assistant chief, mostly talking, trying to push Brock through the Fire Fire, Fireman's Association, to go before the county commissioners to ask for an increase for the green count of fire association money allotted to the, for the association. So Brock's office can still get the fire department evaluated, and the county will basically pay for it through the fire association allotment. This email came date after their meeting, after they voted. What was asked is, if the county gave the money needed, and only if the county did approve the money for Fireman's Association fund or allocation increase, then would every fire department do the evaluation at no cost to each fire department? And then, every year after, more money would be allowed to go to the green count of fire, fire association. Tonight, regarding our budget, I emailed all the chiefs, except for mine, cause I knew what he was saying. I got, I got a couple of responses. One chief wrote, "I wrote, I see the fire association asking that we pay for the evaluation." The fire chief wrote, "Shine fire department wants you to pay for that." I wrote, "Shake my head." He responded, "Association has not asked for more minutes that I am aware of." Anthony stated that he was not asking for it. Some fire departments will not participate, and I am one of them. A second fire chief wrote, "Don't do it." That would be in the interest of the shine fire department and the name of the assistant chief pushing along with Brock, David, and the street hill crowd. After I got that, those texts, I decided to see what was said, and it was said that nine out of eleven fire department voted, Maury being the only fire department that did not vote to participate. I received the minutes, and I also received another email from another fire chief. He said, "Here are the minutes at the last fire association meeting that you requested." Assistant chief is the only one who made the motion to ask that the county fund the money for the study to be completed. There was a lot of friction at this meeting and some turmoil, but it did not get out of hand. I believe most fire departments felt pressure to vote in favor of the study. Maury was the only one at this meeting that did not, Maury was the only one at this meeting that voted no. I have already told Anthony at the next meeting, I would be making a statement that Scooperton will not be participating in this study. Anthony told me that he would be making the statement, statement, and will not be participating either. I believe several fire departments will follow suit and will not have part of this study. I told Anthony that the only reason I voted yes was because I have already stirred the pot in the county, which shouldn't, which I shouldn't care, but didn't want to vote in a worse than it already was. It was Anthony's responsibility to ask for the increase. Obviously, somebody else who was not authorized went to Kyle and asked that the money be included. Somebody was way out of line to overstep Anthony as the president of the association. I will request that the commissioner to vote no to the increase. You have any comments, Brock?
No, sir. Are there, are there any other questions about a budget?
Just table this, man. Just leave it like it is right there. We ain't got to spin it, you sit there.
Well, I, I don't agree with you, you know, Commissioner Jones, especially when I've been told you said this is a done deal. That this is gonna be done no matter what. I said, you said that this is a done deal, that eight thousand dollars will be in the budget.
I do say that, so I, I understood that's what, the thing, they've got all this mess since these come up, and all this has changed since the last meeting.
Well, that's what I'm just saying, that it should not be a done deal. I appreciate Brock taking-
Too much friction going on here. I want it all straightened out before we do anything.
I appreciate Brock, you doing this.
Right.
And this is no personal attack at you, but again, I want to make sure that the assessment is for the right reasons. And if the state assesses them every five years, and I'm assuming you get a copy of that.
Yes.
That those should be on file in your office about the fire departments and what they're assessed. I'm sure, everybody's not the same time, right?
Right, they're not.
They're scattered out within that five years to get the assessments for those departments.
That's right.
And again, what I would like to see, um, in the fire departments, I'm assuming in your end, is that we do look at if volunteerism is the issue, that we do look at some training, some people to come in and talk about that. I'm sure you've got experts in that field, that how to retain what we got, and how to get new people to come in. Cause eventually, it's gonna be exactly like EMS. We had eleven volunteer EMS squads in this county at one time. Now we're down to one.
That's, you're exactly right.
We can increase the paid people, and, and that's great that we're able to do that with the funds that we receive from the state and federal.
Right.
But again, at some point, these fire departments, if they're not already suffering from staffing. And so, as I mentioned, we and the workforce people were here, that we need a public safety track.
I one hundred percent agree.
To try to get these people-
And that recommendation's been made to Linnor Community College for five years.
And try to get these people in interest, again, because your dad was in the fire service.
He was.
And that's probably what got you there.
It is.
And, and that's to be commended. And that's what a lot of these fire departments are doing, is the older firemen, their children, and in some cases, their grandchildren. But if we don't have a pathway for them to get there, and a plan to support these fire departments with their staffing, to me, is a greater issue than at this point, how many calls they answer, and if they've got the right equipment. Cause the state's gonna tell me that, or, excuse me, tell you, cause I don't get a copy of it. But I do appreciate it, but I think this needs to be taken out, the assessment. And I guess we can make the final decision at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any way, now, then, I want all this straightened out. Each department want it, I don't, I'll back them up, but if they don't want it, that's fine too. And when you got ten out of eleven say they were justified, and they done changed their mind, you know, in the last couple of weeks, something wrong with this picture.
And thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
The last thing I want to do is do anything to mandate to our volunteers what they're doing. Should not be a mandate. If they want it, fine, if they don't want it, fine.
That's fine. I appreciate that statement, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions on budget?
I guess you're on the next two as well.
I am, I am.
Sorry about that.
No, you know, that's quite alright.
I'm assuming that the aid to Fort Run is still in the budget?
It is.
Are we still working with them to try to increase their response?
We are.
Okay, so that is, that is being fulfilled, I think that was one of the requests.
That's fifty-four zero one zero zero?
Uh, that is.
Yes, sir. No, I'm sorry.
Five three one two hundred.
Yes, five three one two hundred.
What, Fort Run?
Okay, I said, I said, we got the same thing down, one of those two volunteers, that's each department, right?
Uh, that is the first-
The five four zero one hundred is the first- The five four zero one hundred is the first responder program.
Okay.
And I do want to talk about that as well.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I saw in the, um, I guess it's in here. About each, that is for three departments.
Yes.
But according to the last actuarials for twenty one and twenty two, only one department has received funding.
That's correct.
For that. One of the things that I know all departments do, and correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm talking fire departments, that most fire departments assist EMS with unresponsive persons?
Yes, generally, the fire departments are dispatched to all cardiac arrest patients.
And all CPR and progress calls?
That's correct.
NBC, they're going anyway because of the fire department capability of an extrication.
That's right.
And that kind of thing, and calls where EMS request assistance.
That's correct.
And that's whether it is lifting assistance, or if they possibly need to drive, if all the EMS staff has to get in the back. All fire departments do that.
Yes.
One of the things that concerns me is we're only in the past honored one.
That's right.
To me, this is mutual aid.
Right.
This is not a first responder. I've got the sheets that Mr. Behavins sent out last budget regarding what's required for each category of money that's been out. And then I also got a sheet that was, I'm assuming, developed with Herman Warwick.
Most likely.
Was, he was there. As far as your departments, do you, do the mutual aid departments provide a service that's valued within the emergency medical services?
So, that one department that has been paid the twenty five hundred dollars this, this fiscal year, they are dispatched to every medical call in their fire district. So, so, um, we have been working with the EMS department and our nine one center to come together with a more true first responder program, because just like voluntary EMS, a lot of, a lot of folks get burnt out every time they get that call with that, that three o'clock in the morning stump toe. They're, they're not most likely gonna go up to that one, versus they will go to the high acuity calls. So, we've worked with, um, the EMS department, nine one center, and our medical director to come out, to come up with a true first responder program where departments are only dispatched to those high severity calls. So, yes, while every department already is going to the cardiac arrest, the unreson, whatever they're dispatched to, there's gonna be, they'll be dispatched to a wider range of those higher acuity calls. This first responder program also comes with a scope of practice that allows them to do certain things, such as check a blood pressure, um, you know, check some eyes O two saturation, that sort of thing. So, that is something that we have been working with, working with our medical director and the EMS department, that sort of thing. And we are, um, in the final stages with our medical director getting that approved before we send it out to all the fire departments and ask if there is interest. So I know that generally, we've been putting seventy five hundred dollars in to allow for three departments to do this. However, when we send it out, there may be additional departments that are interested. Nobody really, they didn't want to give you a hard yes or no answer because they hadn't seen the program yet, and I completely understand that. So I just want to, want to make you aware that there may be more than three departments that request this, which I think is a valuable service, because it gets people, it gets medically trained people at houses quicker.
So based on our current rules and requirements, there is one that is following them and one that is in this program. There is budget for three. And we are going to update the program, and we'll accept eleven. I hope we get eleven.
I guess when I'm looking at this, to me, we're not valuing the assistance of the other eight or the other ten.
Right.
whichever way you wanna look at it. I'm assuming that, um, the fifty five, five thousand dollars each fire department gets is for mutual aid?
That is for, that is the appropriation that the county provides the.
And but it's mutual aid if they go into another district. Is that not what that's for?
There's eleven, or five thousand dollars to the eleven departments for a variety of reasons. I believe it more so to be a contribution from the county.
I was assuming about when it was mutual aid.
I'm not sure, way back whenever it was started, I just noticed the county contributes five thousand dollars.
For mutual aid.
Right.
Until we can get the first responders cleared with the medical.
Right.
Because there is a lot of classes.
There is, there will be some background training that has to be done.
And that's gotta be developed.
Right.
And they've gotta have hours to get in this program.
That's correct.
What I would like to see is each fire department get twenty five hundred dollars for the mutual aid that they provide.
I would, I'm one hundred percent fine with that. What I will caution you to do is that if we do that, we will have to, until the program is set in stone and finalized, we will have to treat all other departments as that one department's treated and dispatched them to every EMS call.
But I didn't say first responder, I said mutual aid. So, mutual aid to me is the four things you just said.
Right.
And I would like them to sit, to have classes. One thing that they come up with a fire department is bloodborne pathogens.
Right.
And they have to follow HIPAA, HIPAA rules and regulations.
Yes, they do.
They need to be taught that. They also need to be hands-on certified CPR.
One hundred percent agree.
You know, and they also need to have a general awareness of first aid. I mean, those are just.
Those are all things that are.
Common sense.
They are, and they're all compiled into that first responder program that we're developing.
And get a, a EMS unit to go to the station.
Yes.
Because if you expect them to go in the back and get you a nomer breather, they gotta know what.
Have you seen a copy of that first responder program?
I didn't.
You did?
I did.
Okay, all right. Well, you give me to it then. So, that, everything that you just.
That's what I was looking at, and I didn't know Mr. Dr. Keats was doing that, because the current one, we said that the staff has to be credentialed.
Right.
As a medical respondent.
Yes.
So this is, to me, is a whole different ballgame.
That's right.
To being a first responder.
Correct.
But I would think, and when I say twenty five hundred dollars, to me, for the next year, gives them a chance to go up that level.
Right.
But if they're already doing, and you have agreed, the four things that we talked about previously, and if we can just incorporate those classes.
Right.
And those hours, and the things that you have come up with, which thank you for that, that are now have to be credentialed.
Right.
That they have to have these classes on a yearly basis. CPR, prior hands-on is probably not gonna change. I mean, well, it has changed. I guess CPR has changed, because we used to have to blow in a mask. But again, getting this set up, I would think this would give the apartment time to get instructors.
Right.
In there, and that's what the twenty five hundred dollars.
That's right.
And we were just talking about the assessment. And Chairman, he said if the fire department wants it, let them have it. That twenty five hundred dollars will give them a chance to pay for that assessment. It doesn't have to go through the fire association.
Okay.
I mean, that's my thinking. Again, I know he's looking at me with eyes, but again, if we wanna value all other departments.
It's what we all look at each other with.
Baggy, buggy eyes. I probably got bigger eyes than you.
Yes, you do.
But again, I just want to look at what we're doing now, where we wanna go. And the mutual aid, I'm not calling it first responder.
Right.
If they're already going to calls, that they're requested to go to.
Right.
I think they should be given extra twenty five hundred dollars. And again, that covers the assessment. And if you look at it, it talks about adding about twelve thousand dollars to the budget. And I'm assuming the, uh, fund balance mystery number, since we don't use a lot of fund balance, even though we put it in the budget, that, that can be covered in other areas, since we've lost two volunteer fire, our rescue squads, and that was seven fifty, that, that was fifteen hundred dollars, excuse me, fifteen thousand dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not a large request than what we already were getting. So I would like to change that to a mutual aid for EMS.
Okay.
For twenty five hundred dollars for the fire departments.
Thank you. Anything else in EMS?
I know you're, I know you're trying to move on. You've been trying to get it, get it rehearsed for about five minutes now. At our meeting with Dr. Keats, I asked for a percentage, how many? I got all calls that shines be dispatched. How many, how many calls would you think they answered? Ten percent, hundred percent, what?
I'm not, I, I don't wanna.
I mean, I asked for it for several months now. I have not got that. What's your guess?
I'm not sure. Just out of curiosity, who did you request that data from?
Yeah, a first responder respond pushing on vehicle. That doesn't count. Is that correct?
We are working around.
On the couch with the fire trip, is that right?
We are working to resolve that issue.
I think it's inappropriate, Mr. Chairman.
These are budget items that we're discussing.
What, what budget item are, are you asking for?
We're talking about the first responder program.
I think that we just said that we were gonna work on the first responder program. Didn't we?
Do you have any problem with mutual aid?
No, not that's, that's the wish of the board.
I mean, I think we need to, to go back and look and, and look at numbers, which is what I'm doing.
Right.
I was looking at what we're giving them now, which is, I think the total cost is eighty two thousand dollars. We already give them fifty five, take the A from the, eight from the assessment, the seven fifty from the first responders, until we actually get what the first responders are gonna do.
Right.
And you said that was in the planning.
It is.
Process. And count that as, as, as doing something for all departments, all the fire departments.
I'll be happy to take that under consideration with a vote from the majority of the board, but the budget.
Need a motion?
Yeah.
Jerry just said we don't make motions, Ms.
If you give me a head nod, I'll count.
Was that, I mean.
Where we gonna burn on the bill?
June the sixth.
Good to get it.
We have to open here.
Is that one question?
If we put a motion on the floor then, do what you want to do and go in.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome.
The reason I asked you that question is because on this, um.
That is no longer valid.
It says fifty percent.
That's no longer valid.
Thanks, Brock.
This one's valid.
None of those. We have a new one.
So you're basically telling me we don't have a plan?
We do, but it's none of those, none of those are the current plan.
I'm just gonna make an open comment.
This is set, this is set, last year on March twenty eighth, the plan was to plan it up later.
That was the original draft. We have since then made some corrections and that sort of thing. We went through approval from Dr. Keats.
I'm just gonna make an open comment.
Okay.
Thank you to all the volunteer fire departments for what they do. I didn't realize there was so much concern or, or everything was so wrong with what was going on. And I'll commit to you that if you have problems, if you have needs, if you're coming to this board, we'll work with you. The fire departments are their own bosses, each individual. If collectively they wanna do something, fine. If they don't find, I couldn't care less. I don't wanna get into their business.
Thank you, sir. I guess you're on the next one too?
I am, I am.
Sorry, you got too many to plug inside of your, your umbrella.
I have enough of them.
Our supplies on five seventeen one hundred and a communication.
That's correct.
It says E nine one manager, she has a car.
She does.
And the reason being she has a car.
She is on call. Um, the nine one center, it has to run twenty four seven.
Okay.
There are, I'm sure that y'all have been, there's, there's been some hiccups that we've had since we moved, you know, we've kinda tried to iron those out. And there has to be times where people come back after hours, to result is issues. So she is, we had a vehicle in our department that was not being used. And we, that was assigned to her, so that if she does have to come back after hours, she's on call for a week at a time. And that allows her to be able to come and go, and if she has to return back to work after hours.
And so everybody in your department has a coffee, a county vehicle take home?
That's correct.
Your special department, because we got other compartments that don't have vehicles take home.
Right.
And I'm assuming what kind of gas paid issue did you price it at?
That was, I, I'll be honest with you, I bought part of it at fifty dollars, um, a week. And that we may see an increase in that, we may see, we may not. That was at one of the times that the fuel was low.
Okay. And all these vehicles are gasoline?
They are, correct.
There's no diesel. And do we have scheduling software already?
We do not. We do not.
Something we're gonna.
This is something that we are looking into. Um, scheduling software's gonna cost about two hundred dollars a year. It's very inexpensive.
And the initials, we have, sometimes have issues with the initials there, E T S F.
Fun sixteen.
Yes, fun sixteen.
And that is?
Emergency telephone system phone.
So a lot of the expense has come out of that. Is that the E nine one one money?
Yes, it is. Yes. It is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, and I'll get back up with you.
No problem. Thank y'all.
Public buildings.
Wonderful. Public buildings. Are there any questions?
What line is our gas in? Do any gas for our maintenance people?
What maintenance people?
Does not David?
That's water. Water.
Does he not do maintenance on county buildings?
He moves grass, yeah. Comes out of the, the water font.
And who changes light bulb?
Well, depends on who's available. Let's see.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't, we don't have a daytime maintenance person to, to call and say, we've got lights.
And be careful.
You get one, that's not in here.
I get public works sometimes to do.
Okay. Well, that was one of the things I was looking, we did the janitorial service. But if somebody needs to clean up a spill, or change a light bulb, or there's a snake in the house, or something, we don't have anybody to do that.
We never have, since I've been here. I'd love to have maintenance.
Who lowers flags? So we're, so we're doing on our supervisors and our assistants.
That's right.
Board.
And thank you for all you do.
Now, I'd love to add some maintenance people if you, if you wanna recommend that.
Well, I mean, I just would like, I hate that our directors and supervisors are having to do maintenance in their departments. I just feel like that's a area that we need somebody.
Totally agree.
So if you'll look at that, maintenance, and I guess I'm saying it correctly.
Well, I mean, I, I know what you mean.
I'm gonna recommend that before we, um, move on to the next step, that we try to go to some of these items where our department heads are in attendance, so that we can get back to work, because some of them are way down on the list.
We're about done, Derek. Um, we're getting there.
Forests and service.
This was requested from them. I just complied with a que, uh, with a request.
Salary only.
No.
Benefit.
No, um, with forestry, they do, they give me information. At one time, it was to purchase a vehicle a few years ago. It's different things that they ask for with the monies they request.
So we don't know what this is.
I might probably pull out what their.
If you just drop that down in a comment later, you don't have to do it right now.
Okay. Which page, young man? Which one do you wanna go through?
Around eighteen and sixteen, right, economic development.
Okay.
Setting up for X circus.
Four ninety one is economic development. Any questions?
I seem to be missing parcels in my paper.
It was not in the explanations.
It's in the packet.
I'm going from.
So Munus, page eighteen.
I'm missing the seven and five, four seven five.
Page eighteen. Page eighteen in the Munus.
Under expenditures.
I got economic, the small one. It's four.
He's looking at the, um.
Give me a minute, I think this might be out of order.
Look under your Munus copy.
The one that says expenditures.
I, I can number right here.
Look under expenditures, not the first one, the second one. It's, it's right underneath both the buildings.
From eleven, four, six, one, with, uh, private building, and then I go straight economic.
Look on your second.
Look under the expenditures, not where you are now, but the little, uh, tab that says expenditures, and go down to, go down to page, go to page eighteen, eighteen.
Question contracted services.
Okay, so let's go through that real quick, contracted services is the amount of money that it would cost DOT to host and, to have an employee on their payroll with benefits. I was told that DOT didn't have that position classified at this time, Mr. Norris Tolson's working on that. And I budgeted for the year, that is the only fund balance I budgeted, was to prop that number, as soon as he gets that position classified, we can reduce, drop it out.
So I guess I misunderstood when I, when I, Mr. Thomas left.
Yeah.
With the forty-five thousand, I thought he said DOT would hire an employee.
They will.
Not charged to the county.
They will, I said this is, that will be a DOT employee funded by DOT. This is propped up because they had a classification issue, and this is fixing it, I am just being very conservative and having a.
So we will not pay the hundred thousand.
What's that?
We will not pay the hundred thousand.
We will pay the hundred thousand until DOT classifies the position, and I believe we can be reimbursed from DOT at that time.
Reimbursed from DOT. I was just confused when we put him back in a hundred thousand, and I do get confused sometimes.
I understand.
That, that's gonna be a reimbursable line item, correct?
Any other questions in economic development? Okay.
Juvenile restitution.
So juvenile restitution is in the budget, um, they requested to be in the budget, we've had some changes with JCPC. The school is going to be doing the JCPC function, I've not really been informed as of yet how we are going to be involved budget-wise. So I've left it in there, but just know that JCPC is an offsetted expense and revenue, so once we get clarification, we'll just reduce both from the budget.
We are in the middle of a two-year funding cycle, so I think the plan is to keep it in the county budget for this fiscal year and just reimburse the school for operating at Green for this year.
So we'll act as an agency, as we receive the revenue, we'll pay it to another agency, so that they can.
So this is a pass-through?
That's right, an agency fund, that's right.
For extension.
This is the budgets received from cooperative extension for the programming they provide.
One of these next two are weird.
Which two?
DJJDP Youth and Farmers Market, they're not exactly the same order in the Munus.
Well, it's because they are under the extension, and we tried to keep the departments for the department heads the same.
But I'm saying if they're looking forward to in the Munus, it not, it's gonna be, I have to look at the number.
It'd be numbered, that's right. Are there any questions?
Do we have any updates on the Farmers Market, um?
Joe is returning from his small vacation, he's worked very hard, and he's gonna get started, I have a note, to make that Farmers Market project a multi-year, because it will cross the fiscal year. But it is his, I think, second priority for Green County, once he returns.
It's his second, what's his first?
I think he's got, I think we're having a sign hung, and, uh, the letters above the courthouse in God We Trust.
In God We Trust.
Oh, okay.
They came in, so we're gonna have those hung first.
All right, thanks, sir.
You want to, since we have it in this, uh, which way you wanna go, you wanna go to the DJJDP Youth Programs, or do you wanna go to the Soil Conservation?
Soil Conservation.
Okay, that's fine.
Soil Conservation is the budget received from Soil Conservation.
Okay, we'll go back to page six to eighteen later then.
Okay.
On the explanations there.
They're way back in there.
Yeah.
And this one, the Munus one, they don't follow the same order.
Questions?
Again, these last departments do not have justifications, is that because you didn't ask for it?
It's because I did not receive them.
But did you ask for them?
Everybody was asked.
It saves us a lot of time having to ask questions if we don't know what they're for.
I know. Wanna move on?
Move on.
To, where would you like to go?
Veterans is next, didn't it?
Veterans is just a part-time budget with a five percent increase for salaries.
Okay.
And there's that DJJD.
DJJDP.
Right.
Is that a pass-through as well?
That's juvenile justice, that's a requested budget.
So we pay that?
Yes, that's a requested budget from them, if I'm not mistaken.
So we don't pay for somebody to do it? To lead it?
Um, that is a pass-through budget.
That was what I asked.
Yeah, it's just a pass-through budget where we fund the operation, is that extension or is that in health? I think it's in the health building, aren't the people down where you?
Oh, yeah, they're in my building.
Yes.
Yeah.
There's just some funding that.
So this is also through the extension?
No.
No, no.
So who's the one that's through?
It's in the health budget, but it's not, she doesn't do it, DJJP, let me think about who gives it to me.
Is that Department of Transportation?
Yeah, DPS maybe. And.
DPS, Department of Public Safety?
Yeah, I gotta think of her name.
JCPC is Community Schools.
Okay. It doesn't.
It's the same lady, um.
If it's a pass-through or if it's a budget item?
No, it's not Courtney.
What was the other one?
Is a school expense the next one?
Yep, it's the, so the school, their current expense, they did not ask for an increase. Capital outlay I see is being increased, and there is no more transferred debt, we go down to the same request from the community college, same request from library.
Okay. Mental health.
A B C, um, that's actually mental health, and, um, same request came from?
East Point.
That's right.
Same as before, and we moved on, right, okay.
Five eleven is recreation. Other questions? Okay. So then we move on to DSS. You'll notice in DSS, in the explanation, in the approved, because I wanted to find an area to put it, I placed in there that I budgeted their salaries and benefits at eighty-eight percent, based on, um, positions available, open debt, et cetera.
The Farmers Market, did you ever look at that one?
No, um, that's just tied in before.
It was tied in before?
That's right.
Yep.
Five fourteen is.
I'm gonna ask you, can you make a deal with, uh, Ms. Smith, is that correct, or is that you? DSS.
Uh-huh.
Amanda.
Um, you said you needed an adult service representative?
Yeah, um, yes, that was discussed, an adult.
Is there anybody that, the ones that you have not filled in DSS following that position? Or do we actually need another position because of the caseload?
Yes, it's because of the caseload, yes.
So.
That's why it was asked.
And that is because of Medicaid expansion?
Well, this is because of the increase of the, um, caseload with adult services protection. Um, we're seeing an increase, um, we're seeing a high intensity in the extreme of the cases that we're dealing with. Ms. Stanley, she can speak on that as well, um, with adult services, on some of the case we have to consult with her about, so. Uh, we're just, we're just seeing, um, not only a large amount of cases we're receiving, but they're just, they're dealing with on another level, where we're having to constantly consult legal advice and action, so.
And is this a reimbursable position?
Yes.
So we could put it in your budget and it would be reimbursed?
It would be, yeah.
What percent?
It would be, I think seventy-five percent.
So a trade-off, twenty-five percent doesn't sound much a lot, um, Ms. Stanley, are you in concord with, uh, what she's saying, that the adult services section is becoming kinda heavy?
I, I do not know, I do not know what the total caseload is, it, because there are cases that I might not ever hear about. Um, but there has been an increase in ones that are, I'm becoming involved in, and, um, we have, and, and that's because they have gone to that level where they have been in litigation. I've been in, and it's, it's mostly, um, of course, we have folks that are getting put in the hospital, or various things happening in other counties. So I've been over to Wilson, to Lenore, to Pitt, um, and, and we have a, a rather, I'm sorry, we have, um, a, at least one right now that's been pending two years, and just.
Well, I would just say the adult services could be more difficult. How many clients does each one of your adult ser, so, services worker is responsible for?
Well, I mean, technically now how it works is we only, um, in that unit, we have, we're only budgeted for four positions, and then we have a supervisor. So out of those positions, these workers are doing more roles than what they should be, so we have a worker doing APS, they're also having to do rep payee, they're also had, having to do guardianship. Then we have another person that's having to do APS, um, SA in-home, and some of rep payee. Then we have somebody else having to do the in-home aid program along with help with CAPDA. And the same thing, the other social worker, she has to do CAPDA along with she assists the in-home aid program, so they're doing a lot of, okay, they're doing a lot of duties than just one.
Wouldn't it make sense to reclassify them in the recent PAKE study and add those duties to see if their wage or their classification would have been changed?
I mean, we can look at that.
And wouldn't it also make sense to fill the positions before we add new positions for vacancies that haven't been filled?
Yes, that's correct.
But if the positions that need to be filled is not one of these positions.
They are.
Then you need to, to look at the adult services, so how many, think it's, do you have?
Every time what happened to me, first last day, at the board meeting, it came out and posted, we need a position. I don't think a supervisor would come to tell the professional board, we need this position, and then leave. If he does that, we probably really need that position.
Well, again, how many vacancies do you have in that department?
With adult services, um, so we currently have one right now that's posted, and we're actually getting ready to post another vacancy. The work will be, yeah, she'll be leaving the end of this month.
So you're down to one supervisor?
I, well, yeah, just one supervisor, and we'll just have two workers in that unit.
Well, what, what kinda clients do these people are dealing with that you need these services, many of these services to?
What kinda clients?
Mm-hmm.
Um, well, I mean, we're dealing with the older population, and like I said, some of these, I mean, we're seeing a serious mental health crisis with adult services. Um, as far as, um, problems with trying to find placement, um, we're seeing a lot of issues with a lot of exploitation going on in Green County. So, um, like I was saying.
One of the mo, one of the most challenging, at least from the legal perspective right now, he is only twenty years old. Um, but he is an incompetent adult, and Green County is his guardian, um, guardian of the person. And, um, on top of that, he's got other representation. That I'm coordinating with another lawyer, so it, it's not just elderly, I, I just wanna be, although that's what she usually thought of as the elderly.
After incident yesterday, I think, you know, help needs to be taught. I mean, we, we've got to do something to make mental health a priority, not just this county, this state, but this country. An eighteen-year-old just cannot come up with, oh, I'll just go to school and shoot people, I mean, that's not normal. He couldn't have been normal before that, and he can't be normal now, which I don't think he'd be normal. But again, if we don't provide the staff to do that with, how can we promote our citizens? And I know East Point, I think Commissioner Jones is on that board, they do an excellent job. But again, it comes from the local staff to say which one needs to be more in-depth studies. I know Mr. Havens is shaking his head, no, but I think that's something that we need to look at, at the, uh, budget, works, or the budget, what is it called, when we approve the budget?
Public hearing.
We have a public hearing that we need to address that.
I agree.
Ms. Smith, I want you to, um, we're talking about, uh, the doctor's decision, you gave a very long speech Monday night about your fishing league for Medicaid expansion, I see you giving me the eyes. But, um, I would like for you to tell, I would like for you to tell the commissioner, how many records in Medicaid you can also, that you need.
Um, okay, so I attended a meeting last week, and Medicaid expansion was discussed there. So if you all have looked at the governor's budget, his plan of action is he's wanting to get Medicaid expansion by September twenty twenty, twenty-two. So with that being said, the state is estimating that this is going to serve about six hundred thousand North Carolinians. So, um, this is gonna be a concern for Green County, um, because we don't have the workforce. Um, and I don't know how many cases Green County would be adding to what we already have, but we don't have the, um, employees, and we don't have enough employees to handle that. And we are probably gonna be having to look at adding a, possibly another supervisor to handle, um, dealing with second-party reviews, making sure things are being done correctly. So that was what I touched on Monday at the Social Services Board meeting, the concerns, and.
You've got more needs in the future, but you just gotta wait until the state passes the budget.
And, and also office space, we're not gonna have.
And all these projects that you have in, um, Social Services are audited by the state.
They are.
And you have to have supervisors that pre-audit.
Yes.
Make sure things are done correctly.
Yes, ma'am.
Because if not, you get your hands slapped and your money taken away.
Yes, and obviously if things aren't, um, correct, the county can be looking at a payback.
Yeah, I'm questioning, uh, foster children, are y'all dealing with them too, during great kind of the foster?
Yes, yeah, we ha, oh, are, are you asking if we have foster parents or foster care children?
Uh, both.
Oh, yes, we, we don't have many foster parents, we only have one family, but we do have about thirty foster care children in Green County.
You said about thirty?
About thirty.
So, right now, what, what is happening to those, you have a, a replacement for those foster children there? Who's dealing with those thirty?
They're all over, all over the state pretty much, there's none in Green, um, we may have a few in Green County that are in kinship placements, that we've been able to place with family members, but the majority of our children are, um, in other counties.
And that's extra, we're gonna have to send them out of the county.
And so y'all have to follow them when they go out of the county?
Yeah, we have to see our children once a month, it's mandatory. And more, you know, to take the visits, or, um, doctor's appointments and things.
That's what I said, visitation is also within that realm as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Do the children have to be brought back?
Yes, we have to bring them to Green County to do supervised visitation.
With the tailored plan that these workers are getting to effect December one, that's gonna bring on more paperwork and more, you probably gonna need more people to help with that, I feel sure.
Yes, with the, you're talking about the foster care, yes, sir, yes, mm-hmm.
And I'm assuming that's one of the reasons that you asked for a, another vehicle?
I did.
Is it because of the transportation, was that great?
Yes. Yes.
It was granted? Thank you, sir. We can get your Volkswagen, uh, lift station set up. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I think it's very important that we at least give what she originally asked for, that's that protective service position. As your courage, we're gonna have, we're gonna have more authorities that in the year comes on.
Yeah, I think it'd be very wise to wait and see what happens. Let's fill the positions that we have advertised. And if they do fill, God willing they do, then let's look at adding more positions in that same classification. Rather than use a budget space, let's address it when it becomes needed or the positions are available.
Available.
That's right.
Most of what we've been talking about is HR issues, more so than budget, you know, quite frankly. And I know the budget's tied to it, but action before it's available is...
And I think this department has so many services, like the health department, so many different services that they provide that it's going to only increase.
That's true. And I also think that this salary study was a wonderful opportunity to reclassify positions that have different hats or different job duties to be reclassified for pay increases for people.
And that's any information you gave today?
That is in the information that was provided to the department heads and then provided to Becky Vezie, that has been provided to you in an overview.
What was the written thing you gave us? Is that not the grade in positions?
Yes, I did give that to you.
And you, did the department heads get that as well?
They have not gotten that, no one's gotten anything, you are getting it first.
Would you get a copy of that to all of theirs to see if their personnel fall within a certain department?
Sure.
For as the grade and processing, what that includes? Since you want to reclassify, then they have to know what they're reclassifying and at what grade level.
Well, that, I don't want it. It would be if they defined it on their job duties and responsibilities.
But they need to know what they are.
The way you're giving to the, the HR expert.
But we ain't got that personnel. You're the HR expert at this point?
No, the HR expert is Ms. Becky Vezie at the MAPS Group. I'm the county manager.
Ms. Becky Vezie is not a county employee.
No, she's not.
But you are.
I am.
So if you're asking departments to reclassify...
So...
Their individual staff to meet their needs, they need to know what those classifications are.
Right, so if you'll allow me to review, as mentioned earlier, in the salary study, we had a meeting in my conference room. The department heads came and met with Becky Vezie and if someone's job duties or responsibilities changed, they were to fill out a form. And that's the ones who were reclassified, as best as I could tell. The department, if you'll let me, the department heads filled theirs out for themselves and then the employees were to watch the video and do the same. Did everybody let their staff do that? And then, when it was sent to Becky Vezie, she read through and evaluated and saw, hey, Jerry has more responsibility, he doesn't need to be a 67, he needs to be a 68 because he's got that additional duty or responsibility. It's taken out of our hands to put in the expert, Ms. Becky Vezie's hand.
So what you gave us today?
Yep.
Was a incorporated list that Ms. Vezie did...
That's right.
Based on what the department head said.
And the, the individual staff said. Each staff was supposed to sign off on any changes that they did.
But they do not have a copy of this.
No one has been given anything to do with the salary study.
So tomorrow morning, when you, are you having a department head meeting?
No, I will on June...
Would you send this to all department heads?
Yeah.
I think that would help them before their staff is adequately identified.
Sure. It's just gonna be reflective of what was put on those sheets when you sent it to me to send to Becky Vezie. It's just all reflected.
It's just a comprehensive list.
Yeah.
I'm assuming as I... Every staff member is in one of these positions.
Yes, everybody is identified in the position classification.
Every one of those positions.
Yeah. Anything else in DSS? Health.
Where next?
Health. I don't know the page number.
It's right after DSS.
But it's, it is next.
Are you going down to 541?
Yes, sir, anything in health.
All right.
Well, they have a lot of different...
Pretty large department, pretty large department.
Same as...
Cool, move it.
That means that there's nothing really explained in health. It's what was asked for and salary and benefits are taken care of. If you wanna keep going, same with senior center, senior, senior services.
That's on 43 and 25.
And while we're talking about the health department, I would like to commend the health department on the way they've distributed the COVID vaccines, the professionalism, the job they've done. It's, it's really nice to, to have it handled in such a professional way. It really was. You down to 11:58? Senior Services Admin?
Senior Services, everything that you share and asked for is in the request and the recommended and salaries are covered.
All the departments change that.
My responsibility. Lot of hats. Any questions on general fund expenditures?
Are these interfund transfers?
Where?
All pages.
11, 9, 9.
And I don't think you have it in your register.
But yes, they are interfund transfers. There should be two. Yeah. And one is for registered needs enhancement and one is for transfer of funds to the school to make the debt service payment.
And that's included in there?
That's in Fund 21.
But debt service is not part of the money they receive to the school. It's the money that we put in account to pay off the debt that's on those schools.
It's the debt on the intermediate school.
That's one of the things that I discussed when we talked about how much we give to the schools, that this is not included...
No, it's not.
In their paper trail of what Green County has to put a school system.
Is there any increase, but, so you can change it?
No, I mean, I'm fine, I'm just saying, when they go per pupil, they don't include this...
No, they don't.
At the state level. The only other one I see that's here is Misty.
Yep, Enterprises will be done on June, May 31st, not June 1st.
So we start with water?
Now we've gone through the expenditures, do we wanna go through the revenues?
I want you to hold off a minute.
Okay, on the general fund revenues?
Yes.
Hold off on the general fund revenues.
The question that I asked you before. So this is all the ones we're gonna do today?
We can do more if you want.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with this, 12:30.
Take as much time as we need.
Two and a half hours sitting is, I know. Mr. Chairman, do we have to make a motion to adjourn? Everybody's in agreement with shaking head.
I think we'll stay here at 5 o'clock and get it over with.
Let's do it.
You must don't have anything to do today.
I'm committed to the job.
I think Patrick Miller is having a reception today. 3:30 to 5? I got an invitation. To recognize... And that was a couple weeks ago. Look at your junk files for moments. But I got a reception today at 3:30 for him and Dr. Creach. It's taking this place.
I told you to deny his exception, I never thought so.
I think it's at the Board of Education. I think it's at the Board of Education. I'll check. You may have to know about this reception? I haven't even known. Like I said, it was in my junk mail.
When do we make, when do we make it again?
May 31st, 6:00 PM.
Here.
Yep.
Do you know anything about Mr.?